Hi, everybody. Kelly Lynch. I am Deputy Director and Legal Counsel for the Montana League of Cities and Towns. I have been getting an overwhelming amount of questions and concerns into our office about marijuana. And I duly entitled this, "How I Learned to Stop Worrying and Love Marijuana." Because I think you have a lot of authority to deal with this, and it's gonna be okay. We can handle this. And the best news, which I think you're gonna see once DOR comes on, is we're having really, really good, open communication with Department of Revenue in a way we never had with DPHHS. So I'm really seeing an ability here for us to be able to handle this, be open with the state, understand what each other are doing, and just really walk through this in a lot better way than we have been in the past. So with that, I'm gonna start out with an overview presentation of the law, a bit of a background to how we got here. And I don't want you to think that I believe that I'm an expert in this whatsoever. My background, though, is in land use and planning. I have a master's degree in planning, and I'm a certified planner as well as an attorney. So I do understand the land use regulation part of it. But there's some of you that I know have been really digging in deep on these issues already. So if I'm getting something wrong or I'm off base on something, please feel free to jump in and tell me your experience has been different. Happy to have this be a collaborative learning experience. And then I will, about 9:15, about 10, 15 minutes from now, hopefully, DOR folks will be able to jump on, and we can introduce them. They can give you kind of just a presentation of where they're at and what they're doing. And then we'll just do open for questions and answers, and see if we can get everybody's questions dealt with. So without further ado, let me see if I can share my screen. She's got it. Okay. Can everybody see that? At least a thumbs up from Dan?
Yes, yes. We can see it. And I'll just say real quick, if you do have questions, you can use the raise hand feature next to your name in the participant box, and that will give an indication for us to manage the question answers, and then we can have this dialogue between Kelly and the rest of you. So, sorry. Go ahead, Kelly.
Perfect. I also mentioned that I went to UC Santa Cruz, so doesn't that also give me some, like, you know?
Some street cred.
Some street cred. Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. All right. So first, I want to start with a little history, because it's been a turbulent road to get here, and it helps me understand kind of how we ended up in this situation. In 1970 is when the feds made marijuana and THC, the active ingredient in marijuana, Schedule I drugs, which means that they are federally regulated illegal drugs. In 2004, marijuana, sorry, Montana voters passed that first medical marijuana bill, almost 62%. And that was the first place where we started dealing with medical marijuana. As probably most of you remember, there really wasn't any regulation at the state level about it. And we soon found ourselves in a situation with people walking around with AK-47s and marijuana no outside of Helena here. We had a huge marijuana facility that was, had a pretty dangerous situation going on. So you'll probably remember the raids. There were lots of things happening. In the middle of all that, the legislature passes SB 423, which really cracked down on the use of medical marijuana in Montana. Most of those provisions were upheld by the Supreme Court in 2016. Because of what had happened there, the medical marijuana folks went back to the ballot and got another medical marijuana provision, a ballot passed by 57%, and removed most of those restrictive provisions. And that's kind of where we've been operating since. In 2018, the Farm Bill legalized the use of hemp. And so that's why you started to see hemp and CDBD happen without any kind of federal ramifications. Those don't have THC, an active ingredient, in them. And then in 2020, Montana voters passed I-190, legalizing recreational marijuana. To follow up on that, the legislature then put in some provisions, changed some of the language in I-190, and most importantly, changed the effective dates. And that's how we ended up being able to still be kind of figuring out what we're doing in the transition at this point. So that's the background. Quick overview of where we're at right now and how we've been dealing with just medical marijuana right now. All the licensing has been going through DPHHS. That's changing and going to DOR. DPHHS can deny the application if it's not in conformance with local building codes, essentially fire codes, can't be within 500 feet of the worshiper school. And we had the authority, both counties and cities, to prohibit by a local ordinance or resolution. We could also regulate, but we also specifically can prohibit. Here's the language that allowed us to regulate and prohibit. And that, it turns out, is pretty much the exact same language that has been translated now into HB 701. So not a lot of language change in terms of what are, what we're up to do in the new law. The one thing I will point out, though, is that this language about prohibiting has been taken out. And although it's not entirely clarified by the language, it appears to have been replaced with a voter rejection and approval process. So if you want to prohibit, or you want to approve, and you can't do, and you're not in that position now, you need to go to the voters to make that 100% change. Otherwise, you can regulate. Okay. So the first thing I just wanted to point out really quickly is that under HB 701 and I-190, possession of minor amounts of marijuana became legal as of last January 1st, 2021. So in terms of criminal actions and misdemeanor prosecutions, they have already changed as of this year. The big change, though, is gonna occur beginning January 1st, 2022. And this is when all former medical marijuana licensees, that's the term used in the statute, and it's defined as those who applied for their license on or before November 3rd, 2020. So they might have already had their license, but they might have just applied for it. Those former medical marijuana licensees can begin to sell recreational marijuana in those counties where a majority of voters approved I-190 starting on January 1st, 2022. So we're talking about the folks that you already see in operation in your communities. They then have to get their new license under the new system with their first annual renewal date after January 1st, 2022. And then they'll have to show compliance with the new statutory requirements, of which there are some, and any local regulations that you have in effect as of January 1st, 2022. And then, until for that first year and a half, from January 1st until July 1st of 2023, DOR will not be taking applications for selling recreational marijuana, cultivating recreational marijuana, or manufacturing products for recreational marijuana from any new applicants. So it's kind of a grandfathering period for all those existing ones to come into the new system, transition into the new system. And then beginning July 1st, 2023, is when someone who didn't have their license by November 3rd, or didn't have their application in for their license by November 3rd, 2020, be able to come in at that date. That, to me, is one of the places where I get a lot of questions. Many communities are telling me that we have folks coming in right now, establishing very quickly and saying they're gonna start doing recreational marijuana. They're not gonna be able to do that. They have to have had their application in as of the day recreational marijuana got voted in on November 3rd, 2020. Okay. Couple of grandfathering clauses in the statute. If you have a former medical marijuana licensee, and they just want to continue to sell, cultivate, or manufacture for registered medical marijuana cardholders, that's what they were doing, and they want to just keep continuing to do that, they are grandfathered from your local regulations that you adopt after July 1st until their first license renewal date. They will be grandfathered under the state requirements and be able to continue to operate, but you can start to deal with them later on. And there's also grandfathering for outdoor cultivation, which is now entirely prohibited under the new statute. But if they were already doing outdoor cultivation on November 3rd, 2020, then they can continue that outdoor cultivation. They can't expand it, but they can continue it. And then after the transition to the new system ends, so we've dealt with all the former medical marijuana licensees, then the new applicants, starting on July 1st, 2023, they all have to show compliance with your local regulations to obtain their new license. And then everybody renewing their existing license also has to show that. Okay. Think I already said July 1st. Maybe I'm repeating what I said here. Oh, red counties. So Mayor Jones brought up there, brought up her question about what do we do when we're a community who's in a red, in a county where people did not prove I-190. So the statute essentially changed I-190 to hinge on this question. And they identified that all those counties where I-190 passed are called green counties. And all counties where I-190 did not pass are called red counties. Now, you can go, if your jurisdiction, either the county or city within the county, you can go through the process to put the question back to your voters again. And I suspect as we start to move forward, and maybe some communities make a lot of money off of this, we might see some other communities decide, oh, maybe we want to get in on this and put it to a vote. So you can do that, but you don't have to deal with it right away, because if you're a red county, they won't be able to do anything but continue to do what they're doing under their existing license. But local regulations apply. The only thing I would say is, I wouldn't move forward now with a prohibition to stop an existing medical marijuana licensee. So a former medical marijuana licensee who has been a dispensary in your town, you didn't have a prohibition on them before, and now as a local government, you're gonna put a prohibition on them? I think, under the statute, that has to be done by a vote. Okay. So just quickly, so you have these. This is the map. I think because of this map is why they were termed red and green counties. But this gives you a sense of where it passed and where it didn't pass. I do know that Yellowstone, in Yellowstone, the city of Billings, just put the question to its voters about doing recreational marijuana, and they voted no. So even though Yellowstone's a green county, Billings will be prohibited for recreational marijuana. So I'll just quickly go over the basics of the red and green counties. If it didn't pass in your county, it's not called recreational marijuana now. Under the new statute, it's called adult-use marijuana. Adult-use marijuana sales don't happen unless your residents vote to allow it. So I think Mayor Jones, that gets to our issue. You have a city where you're in a red county, so you don't necessarily need to deal with it, at least immediately, unless you've got an existing former medical marijuana licensee that's causing trouble, and you want to pass some local regulations to, you know, make sure that those impacts aren't felt on the surrounding community. Those are the kinds of local regulations that I think you can continue to adopt. I just wouldn't get rid of them without a vote. In county where I-190 passed, so green counties, that's that same language that you've always had. You can regulate, including but not limited to. Now, like I said, it took up the prohibition language, so I think you're limited to voting the people for that. But everything else is on the table, including zoning and all of the powers and authorities that you have for controlling use and the impacts of use within your jurisdictions through your zoning powers, and that's both cities and counties. And then if there's a desire to change it at the local level, either from an approval to a prohibition, or a prohibition to an approval of any one of the categories of businesses, then the residents can petition you to put that on the ballot, or the governing body can place a resolution on the ballot. That's what happened in Billings. The city just put the resolution on the ballot. Here are the categories, so they've been broken out. So when someone goes to a vote, you can vote on any one of these. You can say, we just don't want to have manufacturers in our town. We don't want to have dispensaries in our town, but we want to have these other things. That, you can put that specifically to the vote. Or you can say, like I think Billings did, maybe Billings just did dispensaries. Dan, do you know, or is someone from Billings on?
Kelly, I'm on. Bill Cool here.
Hi.
All right. Just joined.
That's okay. Did you guys, your vote, your resolution to ask the voters on recreational marijuana, was it just as to dispensaries?
Correct. Dispensaries and recreation, adult-use only.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. So you can see, you can kind of pick and choose here what you want to ask your voters to prohibit or to approve if you're in a red county. So essentially, your options for local regulation are kind of the same as they were before, except with this new voting process. So if you want to prohibit something entirely, you want to look to that voting process. But otherwise, you can use your zoning or your other ordinance powers, your business license powers, or marijuana, you know, your ordinance powers to regulate time, place, manner, and the impact, really, because that's the issue, right? Is, can we regulate them in a way so as they're not having a negative impact on the community or an area of the community? That's an authority you still have. The big issue is whether or not you can get those in place by January 1st. And if you can't, just know that it's limited in who it applies to during the transition period. But you can still get them in place to apply to the new ones that will be coming in on July 1st, 2023. I just wanted to point out that the statute does provide some preemption of local regulation, because it has certain minimum requirements of every applicant. And so they have to meet these no matter what. So you really can't require less of them in these areas. You have to allow for the transportation of marijuana on public roads when someone has a marijuana transport license from the department. You can't reduce that statutory 500-foot spacing between the marijuana business and the worshiper school. And there's a long list of what falls under those two categories. But you can make it greater. You can't impose new regulations on those ones that don't apply for licensure. They want to keep doing medical marijuana until they get to their first license renewal date. They're just gonna continue to do what they're doing. They're not gonna start selling marijuana or recreational use on January 1st. You can't start restricting them until you get to their first renewal date. Marijuana businesses, oh, sorry. I meant to update this to reflect what happened in a separate bill. But marijuana businesses can advertise in electronic medium, but they can't advertise outside of that. They can advertise their business. It's a matter of whether or not they can advertise using the terms marijuana, marijuana products, and using any kind of colloquial terms associated with that. And I'll go into that a little bit with the rules. And then, of course, DOR can impose more state-level requirements to rulemaking. And so I'll touch a little bit on what we have seen so far from DOR. And then we can introduce DOR and let them speak a little bit. In the summer, the first set of rules came out from DOR. Medical, they're mostly associated with registry updates, so those people who are registered cardholders with DPHHS for medical marijuana, fixing some of the language in there and cross-references that needed to be fixed now that the law was moving into a new area and that DOR was taking over. I don't see anything in there of concern. Those were adopted. On August 31st, I've given you the rule number there publication, so you can go look at that if you want to. The next set came in the summer as well. These were adopted in September, dealing with advertising. It essentially reflects what the statute says, that the businesses cannot market marijuana or marijuana products except in electronic advertising, so anything online. They have to comply with local sign regulations. Really happy to see that, just basic language, just referring it back to us. And then it prohibits billboards entirely for them to use. And then definitions and licensing. This is kind of the bulk of the rules that deal with what they have to do to get their license in this transition period. That hearing for these rules is coming up on 11/16, and comments are due on 11/29. I have asked my folks to let me know if you have concerns for us to include in the comments. But the two major ones that I think both Mako and the League have identified is whether or not we can get some more specific language in these rules that applicants have to comply with local regulations. There is that language in the advertising rules that I just talked about. And there's also the same kind of language under the section in these rules for combined-use license language. And so I'd like to see if DOR would be willing to put some of that, sprinkle that language in, in the other places, so that folks just have that heads up and don't start to think that what they do, what they get at the state level means that they're in compliance with local regulations. And then finally, you know, Eric and I have walked through the issue of whether or not the regulations are more broadly grandfathering in some businesses that's provided in statute. And that really has to deal with the medical, the existing former medical marijuana licensees who are going to continue to just do marketing, selling, manufacturing, cultivation in the medical marijuana arena, and how that's gonna work, and how long they're grandfathered, and whether or not they're grandfathered from local regulations. So that's an ongoing discussion that we're having with them. And I just need to make sure I understand kind of what they're thinking and how these regulations are gonna apply. So those are kind of the two areas. There's two more sets of rules coming. They have been released. The hearing is gonna be for these two on 11/30, and comments are both due on 12/6. Under the taxation and enforcement ones, which you'll probably want to take a look at, that first 42, 1040, there's a process for notice of license suspension and revocation that goes to the applicant. It would be nice to see that go, that notice go to local government, so that we know if someone's been suspended or their license has been revoked. And then there's a lot of language in there about how the taxation will work if you pass that local taxation. And in particular, I wanted to point out that if you do pass that tax, you need to notify Revenue 90 days before the effective date, or those payments won't be required until the end of the following quarter. So you might miss a whole quarter if you miss that deadline. So I just wanted to make sure that you saw that. And then finally, 1042 has some additional registry updates and cleanup. I didn't see anything in there either, but that goes at the same time for the hearing and comments as the taxation enforcement one. So just a couple of notes to you. Follow the rulemaking deadlines. Comment on any concerns you have. Get local regulations in place by January 1st. If you have to address any of your existing former medical marijuana licensees, they're gonna start selling recreational on January 1st, 2022. So if you have any problems with that, and you don't think your regulations are good enough to be dealing with that, you need to get those in place. And I wanted to point out, remember that you have the power for emergency ordinances under Title VII, and you do have the interim zoning ordinance powers. It's a little easier for cities than it is for counties, but you still do have that ability to address some of the immediate issues if you need to get those in place by January 1st. You have, under the statute, you have to send those newly, those adopted ordinances to Revenue in order for them to make sure that someone is in compliance with local regs. And if you wouldn't mind sending them to me as well, so I can keep basically a big boulder of everybody's license, everyone's ordinances, that would be great, because then I can send out samples and templates to folks. And then Mako and the League put together a JOT form survey for you to fill out your contact information, that we can send a big database to DOR at once. So it would be nice if we could, if you fill that out, make sure you fill that out, and we'll get that to DOR. And then, and then all of those people will learn and get information from DOR when anything is happening. And particularly finding out about an applicant coming in who, and DOR wants to find out if they're in compliance with local regulations. We are working very closely with DOR to make sure that we have input and can provide them assistance and help on making that determination from the local government level, so that someone doesn't get a license and then turn around and try and hammer us locally over the head with it that they're somehow vested, even if they're in violation of local regulation. All right. So I've been seeing a whole bunch of pop-ups on the chat. But I think what I'm gonna do is let DOR folks kind of talk a little bit. I'll introduce them. And then let's just open it up to Q and A for everyone to be engaged in. Let me stop cheering. If I can figure that out. There we go. All right. So the first person I want to introduce is Courtney Cosgrove, because I see she's on. So Courtney, why don't you go ahead, and then maybe you can identify who else you've got on. That would be great.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Good morning, everyone. My name is Courtney Cosgrove. I'm the attorney for the Cannabis Control Division. I joined DOR in July. And so a lot like you folks, I'm still learning a lot and getting my arms around Hospital 701, which is a bit of a monster. I was nine years with the Department of Revenue at a previous time, so not a complete newbie. I appreciate Kelly and Mako putting this together. I think as we move forward, communication between the state and local governments is obviously going to be critical. Even if there are disagreements, I think it's important for everyone to know where we stand on certain of these interpretations and policy decisions that have been made. I believe that Kristin Barber, who is the Division Administrator for the Cannabis Control Division, is on here as well. So I'm just gonna pause and see if she pops up here.
Courtney, it's comments that we appreciate being invited to this discussion and stayed and invested in creating relationships with all of you. We want to make sure transparency. We also want to be very honest that this is a brand-new program. We're all finding our way through it, and it's plausible mistakes will be made. But we're gonna do our best to try to mitigate those the best that we can. And a policy decision needs to be communicated, and we need to walk through that, because it's a little bit, you know, there's some, I will be very candid that there's a lot of gray areas in Hospital 701 that isn't super clear, or they didn't quite tie off all of the different, they didn't quite align all of the dots. And so we've had to obviously do the best that we can to get this program up and running. If something's working for you, we want to know. But if something isn't, we also want to know. And we look forward to being partners with all of you.
That's all I have for, like, opening remarks. Kelly, if you want to let us know. Some of these questions, I think we can field. Some, I think, are more for you or Mako folks.
Yeah. So thanks. First of all, I just really want to thank DOR for being so open and communicative with us. It has been a huge... It has been a huge, um, improvement from what we had before. And I just really appreciate that, and I know local governments really appreciate that. Um, Dan, you, I for some reason can't open my chat and I'm sure it's just because I'm an idiot, but, um, if you could help me read the questions.
That's a, that's a great excuse, Kelly, I appreciate that. Happy to help out. So that we've got one question here about, uh, what if they want to expand into another location? And that was from Sandra, so I don't know if you want to give some context to that, Sandra, is it, is it for an existing? Yeah, so.
It was a, a company that had a dispensary in Kalispell. They was wanting to expand that same operation in Roundup. That's what I was wanting to know about their licensing. Of course, our, our county's red, so I don't have to be concerned about it, but it may not go away, so I'm trying to be as informed as I can, so.
So it's an existing former medical marijuana license. Uh, and they want to open a new location in a, in Roundup.
Yeah, that's what they wanted to do.
But it's a red county, would, would they be able to do it?
No, no, no new, um, locations in red counties. So we read the language of 1612301 as allowing non, excuse me, former medical marijuana licensees in red counties are limited to their existing, uh, premises. Um, so a green county is not going to be able to expand into a red county. And, and a red county is not going to be able to expand their existing operations either.
And then if they want, let's say, let's pretend that the same dispensary, who is an FMML, wants to, um, open up a new one in a green county, they can, but they have to go through the application process during this transition phase.
Correct.
Or I guess after.
Right.
We've got another question here, Kelly, is, will these slides be available after the presentation?
No, these are extremely important and I'm going to be charging $500 every person that wants them. Dan, I think you said you'd be hosting them?
Yeah, we could, we can host both the recording of this, uh, session as well as the slides if you'd like. We could put them both, uh, on our website.
Perfect, and we will put them on our, our website as well, of course.
Another question here is a green, in a green county, is an ordinance that prohibits business selling, uh, substances? I said, okay, in a green county, is an ordinance that prohibits businesses selling from substances prohibited by federal law still valid and enforceable? Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, Courtney and Kristen, I don't know if you guys have encountered this as well, but during the whole medical marijuana business, we, and I don't know if the counties do this, but the cities for a very long time, some of them hundreds of years, or a hundred, a hundred years, have had provisions in their ordinance that say that they cannot, uh, permit businesses that are in violation of federal law. And they have used that to essentially not allow any marijuana, marijuana, um, businesses because of because they're in violation of federal law.
So there are cities currently that have these ordinances in effect and they are, okay, um.
There, it's not necessarily an ordinance, it's really just something that's in their code, it's been in their code forever. Um, and, you know, I'm not sure anyone could even tell you how it got there or why. Um, you know, my position has always been that that's not a very strong one on which to rely when you have zoning authority and you have the ability, particularly before you had the specific authority under state statute to prohibit them. So you take that instead or regulate them through zoning. Now that we're in a situation where the prohibition really, uh, the statute really hinges on a vote, I would be really concerned about relying on an old code provision that says, eh, we can't let you uh, engage in any business that's in violation of federal law because you have a state statute that says you can do it. Um, I think if you are in a red county, it's not an issue. If you're in a green county, I think you should go through the process to have the voters vote on it.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to that, that makes sense to me, Kelly.
I see, sorry, who was that, Dan?
Well, I was just going to say there's another question, but did you, did, Jim, you've got a question?
I just wanted to see, I'm going to pick on Jim Nugent, because I always love to call on him. These big picture issues about municipal operations, and I just wondered if he had any thoughts about this.
I agree with you, Kelly. I don't know why some communities did that. I think your analysis is correct.
Yay. I'm taking that to the bank.
We've got the Nugent stamp of approval.
Right?
So we've got another question here, it is sim, I think it's in a similar, uh, genre. If your current ordinance has a term prohibited in it, will it need to be amended to reflect the current law? I think it's, again, kind of that's Sandra's question on that.
I, and I think, sorry to keep jumping in here, but I, I think, um, because you're in red county, I don't think you need to worry about it. Um, but if you were faced with the situation where, um, that was going to change, I think that you need, you need to move, either you need to have your voters specifically, let's say, let's say Muscle Shell County puts it to the voters and the Muscle Shell County voters approve it. So you turn into a green county. But you wanted to see if your voters in Roundup still want to prohibit it. You could then put that to a vote of your voters to say, wait a minute, how about here in Roundup, do we want to allow it? And if they don't say no, then yes, I think you need to move to a more nuanced regulation through your zoning, um, or your business licensing process to determine how you can mitigate the impacts of those businesses. And not prohibit them by ordinance.
Okay, so we have another question, you ready for another one?
Sure.
Uh, is there a list that can be obtained to see who is FMML legal at this time and their addresses?
So I'll jump in on this one. When the program was at DPHHS, this was not information that, that health would share. Um, under Title 50, we're pretty restricted with what we can share regarding licensees. Um, it opens up a little more in Hospital 701, um, effective January 1. Um, we are going to put this on our webpage, so folks can hop on under our licensee list and see who is medical only and who can sell adult use. Um, however, on Monday, um, in a, in another call with Kelly and with Eric Bryson from Mako, um, they pointed out that probably the, their, the constitution would trump the statute in terms of what we can share. Um, so that I would say we're still considering that, I think that analysis is probably correct. Um, and once we vet it through legal over here, this is a really long lawyerly way of saying, yeah, I think we can probably get you that information.
Another question, also does a community or a county get notified prior to them getting licensed? Does the local community have any say?
Yeah, and so that was the purpose of the call on Monday with, with some local jurisdictions to, to figure out what is that communication process going to be. Um, and that's the reason that Kelly is asking everyone to fill out that survey. So what we are still trying to, to define, but what we likely will happen is that we get an application for a license. We will have a contact in that local jurisdiction that we notify that they're, you know, business is seeking a license there. And we work with someone on the county commission or the planning board or whatever it is who vets it on their side and lets us know whether, um, that location and license type would be legal where they're wanting to set up business.
Great, and another question then, in medical marijuana dispensaries?
Sorry, Dan, before you go on to the next question, I just wanted to add to what Courtney said. I know we're still having the conversations about what that's going to look like. Um, and I think one of the things that we were suggesting was whether or not we could do something where we, where it's kind of a provisional approval. Um, you know, either we make something provisionally approved based on getting your state license or the state license gets provisionally approved based on knowing that, um, something is approved at the state or at the local level. So, uh, we're still just kind of talking about how that's going to look and how, you know, what the process is and, and who goes first and kind of how that happens, so. But I'm feeling a lot better about how Revenue is open to this discussion than the previous situation where we had no communication at all, so I think it's really good, thanks, guys.
Yeah, and we feel good about it too. Um, it helps to have that safety net. We don't want to go out and license someone and then find out there was an ordinance we didn't know about or we're right next door to a school that, or you know, private school, that's not a great example, but maybe like an in-home type place where if we walk out and do a physical inspection, we're not going to know that that business is there. So I think having more sets of eyes on it is going to be helpful for everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, next question is a question of clarification. A medical marijuana dispensary is only able to sell recreational marijuana if they began selling prior to November 3rd, 2020. Is this correct? I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Their, their application had to be in, right, Courtney?
Right, application pending on or before November 3rd, 2020, and then also in a green county. Those folks will be able to sell Rec- January 1.
And is that the list that you guys are going to post on the website?
Yes, yep, we'll distinguish between who is, who is, um, medical only and who can sell adult use.
And just to give you a ballpark number, because it's helpful, is right now we have 434 licensed dispensaries in the state. 383 will roll over into the adult use market. So that gives you an idea that about 80 to 100, and our numbers are changing, you know, all the time just because there are still people who are adding additional dispensaries under their previous license. But there will be about 80 to 100 that remain medical only.
Good. And any sense of how many are in operation now but aren't? Didn't meet the November 3rd, 2020 deadline?
So I think that's where we're, yeah, I mean, taking into obviously the green county, red county, we're just ballparking it with an approximation because we're still going through our database. And I'd love to tell you that we feel really confident with the data that we have. We think it's close, but we're finding out that there was a timeframe under the Department of Health and Human Services where their licensing system went down for nine months. And so all of those applications were processed in paper. And so we're making sure that the paper application matches the information in the system, but we have found some discrepancies. And so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm trying to not give you an exact number because I don't feel confident about it, but I would say somewhere around the ballpark of 80 to 85.
Are you ready for another question? If, uh, we pass the local tax on adult use, what will the flow of funds look like? Will the DOR collect the tax and then remit it to the city and county?
Um, Kristen, do you know the answer to that? I can point you to our Rule Notice 421040. Um, there is a rule, a draft rule in that regarding the local option tax. Um, this was put together by our Business and Income Tax Division, and I, so I'm not as familiar with it, but I would direct you to New Rule 13 in that package. Um, and that might answer your question. I'm sorry, like, I haven't looked much at the, the tax side of it.
I mean, I would say, yes, the department's intention will be we collect the tax and remit it back to the county. Our preference would be like, we don't want to break it down into all the sub jurisdictions of each county. That, that's too much work for the Department of Revenue, that can be different in all 56 locations. And so our point would be that we, we collect it, we remit it to the county, and the county figures out where that money goes within its area, so.
And that's right, that was the distinction I couldn't remember, was that we're not going to break it down to the, um, local jurisdictions.
All right, so another question, we're ready? If a city does not permit any dispensaries or have, or have any, do they get a portion of the excise tax revenue?
Can I ask if I, but sorry, Kelly, I was going to say by excise tax, are you talking about the optional three, up to 3% local option sales tax? Or are you talking about the, the, the money that comes through the, the general fund that has been like allocated back to local governments?
So, yeah.
Do you think, red county? You have a clarification there? Well, let's, let's assume it's if, if the.
All right, Dan, I, this to me sounds like a question based on what was originally in I-190. And, um, and I would answer it first by saying that got changed in HB 701. The money is no longer going, there's not a statewide tax being placed on it that's being allocated to local governments. Um, it goes basically to state allocations except for one small grant program to law enforcement to like pay for dogs. Um, other than that, if you want a local allocation of tax dollars related to the impact, or to, to deal with the impacts of marijuana, or anything else for that matter, you have to put that to a vote of your own voters and then it just stays local. So if you don't have any dispensaries, um, you wouldn't get any portion of that unless you put in for a grant for that law enforcement one that I mentioned.
And I would just direct folks to Section 95 of Hospital 701. I think also talks about what happens with the local option excise tax revenue.
All right, so another question here is, is it correct that MCA 1612301, Sub 7, Sub A, is being read to require that voters in a city located in a green county vote to prohibit recreational sales? Is a separate resolution question required for each category of activities?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to take that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's 100% clear that you can't prohibit without a vote, but I think if you read, uh, 301 and the rest of the statute as a whole, I, I, I think it comes to the legal conclusion that you would need to take it to a vote of the people to prohibit entirely if you're in a green county. Um, if you feel like taking that to court, then I think you are welcome to try it, but I think that's what is read, that's how you read it. Um, I don't think you need to have a separate resolution on each category of activities unless you want people to vote separately in each category of activities, right? So if you, if you want, um, if you want to ask them separately so that they would allow some adult use like cultivation, but not dispensaries, then you would want to ask it separately. But if you just want to prohibit everything, I don't think you would need to do it separately. Hope that makes sense.
And Kelly, can I offer just a little bit of clarity? Just, I'm hearing like adult use, um, cultivation and manufacturing. I want to make sure everyone knows that the dispensary is that point of sale for the public, whether you delineate between medical and adult use or recreational. At the cultivation site and at the manufacturing site, that is not separated out. You, they can't say that this part of their grow is just medical because that's not, you know, they can't separate it out. So if you're going to allow for cultivation, it doesn't separate out the, the recreational side from medical. So it's, it's everything. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that if you're going to prohibit those types of businesses, you don't have to clothe them out individually for those types of, um, products.
Thanks. If you continue to that question, please jump back in the chat or raise your hands.
And another question here, is in daycare, one of the prohibited, uh, businesses or, anyway, so you've got schools and churches, is, is a daycare fall under one of those? School or church or, or is it daycare?
It, it doesn't, and I, I can't point to the precise section in Hospital 701 that has the 500 foot requirement right now. Um, but it references, I believe it's a Title 20 definition of schools, and that does not include daycares. I can find the.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
So churches are the 500 foot distance? So churches and schools, and then there's a definition that defines what is considered as school?
That's right.
Okay, is there a definition for church?
Um, I just lost you guys, um. Um, I just lost you guys. All right, sorry. There's not a separately referenced definition of church, but the statutory language itself is broad. It's church or, you know, other place of worship. But it is building used exclusively as a church. So, and I am not clear on whether that exclusively language also applies to schools. So I'm kind of looking ahead at the homeschooler. And our interpretation would be no, a homeschooler would not get that 500-foot minimum.
All right. Ready for another?
Yeah. And I think Kristin will have to hop off here. I know she's got a 10 o'clock call. So Kristin, do you want to, do you want to, I don't want to keep you. Do you want to say goodbye? And I...
Yeah, no, it's, I know you've got it. It's a pleasure, yeah, to have the opportunity to, I guess, meet you virtually. And we do look forward to working with you in the future. If your local jurisdictions are going to move forward and make changes, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to be partners in any way that we can. And I'm sure as this evolves, we will all find our footing beneath us at the same time together. So I wish you all good luck. And again, we're a resource and a partner where we can be. Thanks, and have a good weekend.
Thanks, Kristin.
Thanks. So another question here about marijuana dispensaries in another county may not deliver into communities with a red county. Is that correct?
They would be able to deliver to registered cardholders. But we have in rule that there are not going to be any like Uber weed type of deliveries to adult use consumers.
If a marijuana grow business operates within a city in a red county, could a local option tax apply to any sales it makes to other marijuana businesses outside of that county?
To other marijuana, so there is no wholesale tax? From understanding the question correctly, the local option tax is only at the point of sale to consumers. The way I read House Bill 701, the money goes 50% to the county and then 45% gets distributed among cities based on population. But if it's just to grow, yeah, there is no wholesale tax. Not, not now. We think that that may change in the next legislative session.
All right. I think that's it for the questions in the chat. I think we'll open it up if anyone has any questions. If you want to unmute yourself, we'll take that risk. If you want to unmute yourself and ask your question, we've got just a few more minutes. If there's anything burning that you'd like to ask of our distinguished panel?
Looks like Mayor Cool has his hand raised.
Oh, Mayor Cool, go ahead.
His full hand, not his...
Hey, Dan, thank you, Courtney, Tristan, Kelly, everyone. Very helpful. Glad this has been recorded. This isn't really a question, but more just a comment. My prediction is that much of this discussion will trend to the issue of potency. And Billings was going down the path of looking very seriously at regulation of potency before our vote prohibited recreational use dispensaries. I would predict that that will be a big issue before the next legislative session, because that's what really matters. Marijuana has evolved dramatically since the 1970s, when typical concentrations were two to maybe 4% THC. Now, your typical plant is well into the teens. State statute regulates it 35%. But the real issue are distillates and concentrates in Colorado now by sales. Most sale of THC products is in concentrates and distillates. So you now can get a syringe with virtually pure THC and put a couple of drops underneath your tongue. Creates real risks for aggravation of psychosis and aggravation of other mental conditions. That's pretty clear in the medical literature. And our state legislation is very inadequate on that. There's almost no models in the country. Vermont, a little bit. So I just encourage everybody to start paying close attention to that. If people would like references to some of the information in the literature out there, you contact our deputy city attorney, Karen Tracy, and she can provide that. So just alert, that's a big issue.
Thanks, Mayor Cole, for sharing those thoughts. It's helpful. Any other thoughts or comments? Or questions?
Well, I mean, it's literally 10:00 AM, so I can't imagine holding a more organized and timely meeting than that.
We're gonna have to put that in the record book. Well, I just do want to say thank you to our distinguished panel and their, to Kelly and to Courtney for your wisdom and your thoughts and the clarifications you brought to this issue. So our appreciation to you for that. And then for everyone, again, this has been recorded. Kelly is willing to share for a nominal fee of $500 per slide, per person. But she will sell, share the slides, and we will pair those with the presentation and put those on our website as well. So we appreciate your participation. And this is an ongoing conversation, and I'm sure we'll probably have more as time goes by. So I know with the lead, we'll continue having a couple, I think, after the Thanksgiving break, we'll have another, another couple of, we'll co-host a couple more webinars like this, town hall meetings, topics to be determined. Or do we know them right now? I think you know them now, don't you, Kelly, what the topics are?
Yeah, we're gonna do one on the infrastructure bill when we've been able to kind of like get a little bit more understanding under our belt and maybe get some folks from the National Legacy Cities on to help us understand how that's going to work. Because we're not busy enough with all the other avenues of things everyone's dealing with.
Yeah. So, so watch for that. And with that, I appreciate your attendance and participation, and we hope you have a great Friday and a great weekend. Talk to you all soon.
All right. So here we have with the, with the loss of Phil Donnelly recently. He was on the Mineral County Tax Appeal Board, and his term is still in the middle of his term. So the vacancy exists, and the Tax Appeal Board has found a pretty qualified candidate in the form of a Polly McNeil, who we used to work for the Department of Revenue when the office was open and existed in St. Regis. So she knows something about property. And therefore, the Tax Appeal Board is recommending that we appoint Polly McNeil to fill out the remainder of Phil Donnelly.
I would make a motion that we appoint Polly McNeil to finish out the unexpired term of Phil Donnelly.
I will second that.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on the candidate applying? Been hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? All right, I'll fill this out and take it up to Kel Ann.
Start her meeting with Fish Wildlife and Parks. I know.
So to discuss a new process and a new timeline for developing a management plan for Fish Creek FWB land. Liz Bradley and all.
Is this okay?
Yeah, it looks fancy, but it's for anybody.
There you go, it's your call.
It suits you well.
You were right, Randy. Okay, who's the lead today?
So as, I think I can at least visit with everybody with the same things that I mentioned to you on the phone, Roman. I think for the purpose today, we wanted to introduce Hope Stockwell. So as our new, the new division administrator for Park and Outdoor Recreation. So we'll talk a little bit about that. That's a new division for Fish Wildlife and Parks. We've gone through a reorganization. And when we talk about that, I hope you'll see the same thing that I'm seeing, that the new organization in that division is going to allow Fish Wildlife and Parks to do, well, a better job. I was going to say maybe do a job in our planning efforts around Fish Creek. So as you know, at Fish Creek, we have two fishing access sites, a state park, and wildlife management area. And in the past, that's not always made it easy for Fish Wildlife and Parks to do planning effort for the whole watershed. But now, under this new Park and Recreation Division, those entities and those land parts are all under one division. So it's also really good timing for us, and we'll talk about this some more, for us to pick that effort up and really do a nice job, try to be more comprehensive in what Fish Creek is and what is happening out there and how Fish Wildlife and Parks is going to manage that. So the other thing we want to touch on is that planning effort to make sure we have a good connection with our commissioners on how things you'd like to see in our planning effort, or maybe how we go about our process, and folks you want to make sure that we connect to during that process. But maybe first, we can talk, or maybe hear from Hope on the Park and Outdoor Recreation Division, and maybe about the organizational structure, the changes that Fish Wildlife and Parks has gone through there.
Sure. Happy to. Well, thanks for having us. I'm really glad to be here. I have been on the job since September 1st, so I'm still getting my legs under me, admittedly. But prior to this, I worked for the legislature, and the chairman was reminding me today that we had worked together on a bill draft a few sessions ago. And so it's, I've worked a lot with Representative Logi and Senator Bob Brown, and so have a lot of experience with those gentlemen. But on this side of things, so this new division, Parks and Outdoor Recreation, as Randy said, we're bringing a lot of similar functions that have been spread out across divisions previously together. And it's all focused on better managing the human use of our sites. And so it's site operations of parks, fishing access sites, recreation on wildlife management areas, although that's much different looking than it is at Parks and FASs and other locations. But also the management, or pardon me, the maintenance of those sites, having all of those land management stewardship responsibilities under one roof. We're also taking on hunting and fishing access programs, including block management. So just so you're aware of that, we're going to be also handling the shooting range and recreational trail grant programs, as well as shooting range development projects that we're undertaking. And so quite a few things coming under this one roof. But the whole intent is that it's going to allow us to be more efficient and more effective in collaborating on the maintenance and management of human use of our sites. I have been really thrilled with the response we've had across the agency so far. People are wanting to pitch in and get together on this. And I think that this example at Fish Creek is a great example of how we're all going to, it's just ripe in terms of it's got all the different site types of, as Randy described, we're going to be working across divisions on how we better manage the recreation in the area. And that's twofold. One, we want to provide users a better experience. Two, we want to do better by the resource and protection and the value of the resource for years to come. So it's kind of a twofold approach. I don't know if any of you have met Quentin Cugula before, but he really has given me a charge, and it's one that I've taken on wholeheartedly, which is he wants to be the best illustration in the country of finding that right balance between protecting and preserving the resource, but also allowing for a wonderful user experience. And so that's sort of the motto that we're working under as we go forward with all of these things. But the intention is that we'd like to go through reshaping Fish Creek's management and visioning for what we can do there and do it better, and holistically looking at recreation with an eye toward that 23 session, and making some asks financially for what we need to help the recreation be better there and better management of the site. We were talking on the way up even just about better signage, for instance. We have a holistic process going on across the agency for sign planning, wayfinding. And I see Fish Creek fitting right into that in terms of just doing it better. So we have lots of things in the fire, lots of irons, and lots of different ways we're coming around this. And Fish Creek is, Fish Creek is a big piece of that in my mind. So I just appreciate your time, because I don't want to start down that road without knowing where you're at on the concept of recreation there, holistically, where you'd like to see us take this potentially. Anything that you see is, that's off limits, or be careful about this, or we'd really like to see this there. So looking for guidance from you about what you'd like to see as we work through this process. We want to be good partners. So that's what I have to say.
Good. Waiting to hear if you guys have any immediate reactions.
So are you guys going to be developing the park then, or is this just going to stay as is?
Well, so two responses to that. One, there will be changes. The expectation is you're going to see action on the ground. And that's part of tying into that 23 legislative ask is to get the financial authority that we need to make the changes on the ground. But two, we don't want to be pre-decisional in what that looks like as we restart this planning and visioning process. So I can't say right now. I expect, for instance, we have dispersed camping going on across all of the site types within the Fish Creek global area, and how do we better manage that camping? So we're protecting the resource, for instance. So that, in my mind, one example is you're talking about putting in some latrines, better defining where camping should be, for instance. But the full scope of what that development like might look like, I couldn't say to you today.
I think when I, I think that's a good question, Lori, because the last planning effort, it was, we really had an eye towards, on the state park piece in particular, I really had an eye towards developing a campground footprint, developing those, a place that people would go to recreate. And I, so the things that, for me, that have changed since then is we're coming at this more holistically, across what recreational opportunities and the resource values between the fishing access sites and the state park and the wildlife management area, and our partners at DNRC, who have been with us along on trying to figure out, will they be a part of our planning process? And I think they will be, because we're also trying to help manage the recreation. And Fish Wildlife and Parks manages the recreation for DNRC on those dispersed campsites all the way up to Fish Creek. The other benefit that we have is when we hit pause on that last planning effort, and now we have a number of years that have gone by, and since we've owned Fish Creek for all those years, we're learning what you guys probably knew all along, where folks already want to recreate, where they want to camp, and the kind of things that they'd like to do. So I think a big part of this for us is making sure we've got the resources to manage all the places that people are already trying to go. So we can expend a fair bit of money trying to develop something new, but I think in this effort, we're also looking at if we did commit to Fish Creek in development, how do we do that and manage all the stuff that people are already trying to do and all the places they're already trying to go? And that, that's, we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot about where people would prefer to camp and what the kind of activities they'd like to do up there.
I mean, we were on the ground about a month ago with DNRC, looking at the dispersed camping locations. And then we also went up and looking at the state park. And, you know, it seems pretty quickly obvious where people want to be. And so can we help them do a better job of that? Have better experience, but also protect that landscape better. Rethink what, for instance, that big pine FAS area looks like, and doing a little more there for services and structure and interpretation and that sort of thing particularly.
So in this kind of review and your second go at it, are you going to maintain the current number of acres in the state park versus WMA? Or is that being changed? Or what do you?
I think that could be on the table. You know, we have the authority within the agency to redesignate lands that are administered by the agency, owned by the agency. And I think that's on the table in terms of what are these lines that have been drawn? Do they still make sense? Do we reshape them somehow? Yeah.
Because with WMA, you have some restrictions with vehicles and motorized. And so I didn't know if, through what you've been learning, has some of the natural conducive camping been occurring in areas where you currently aren't really allowing it because of the WMA? Or, you know, swap the WMA over here, where everybody wants to camp, with something over here where they don't camp? Or is that stuff on the table? Or is that kind of defined by the Pittman Robbins money that purchased the WMA land for wildlife? Is that kind of set? If you know what I'm asking.
Yeah, I do. I think it's a really good question. I think if we come at it as from, if there are very real resource things that we're worried about, that we want to make sure we protect, I don't think there's anything about the current ownership and structure that are going to, that's going to prevent us from protecting those important resources, whether they're on the state park or the WMA. Similarly, if there are those places where the recreation is, and those are the spots where people clearly want to be camping, I don't think there's anything in the funding sources that currently that are keeping us from being... that currently that are keeping us from being able to potentially develop that. But, and I'm glad to hear what Hope's reaction to that, if we bump into something, as we're going through this process and the planning process, if we start to see things where there's a really, a real genuine need for a certain amount of development or how we want to structure it, or the way we want our public to recreate up there, and that somehow is being bound by the ownership, it'd be great to be able to look at it. I'm, I'm not walking into this thinking that, that we're bound by too much there. I'm not, I'm not feeling those bounds right now, at least from what I'm thinking. But it'd be great to see if it pops up.
But I think Liz has examples of where dispersed camping is happening on the wildlife management area where there is some concern. And then we also have some very real weed spread concerns and the nice new plant up there in some areas.
Yeah, so I, I came not too long ago. We talked about the weed management project, the whip project, and the spread of Antonada. So that's the new weed that showed up at Fish Creek. And so that's showing up in some of our higher use areas. So, so yeah, people can camp where they want on the WMA. The issue is it's just becoming more and more people spreading out without any kind of management on it. So how do we provide the right facilities to kind of, you know, also create a better experience too with latrines, things like that? But it's also been a fire danger issue, and I know where people have camped and started a fire before that's burned up. So it's more than just that, you know, it's how to create bigger problems or, you know, stave off some of those kind of problems too with that. So looking at it from, and people want to be along the creek. That just seems to be, it makes sense. The summertime is when we get most of the use and people are fishing up there, and that's primarily where it is. So that's all checkerboard, you know, that's all, you know, some of it's state parks, some of it's DNRC, some of it's WMA, and it's just kind of throughout there. So I think we can look at that, and it's just kind of spreading out everywhere and see how we might be able to, to manage that better.
This is a little bit more into what we're doing with the reorg as a whole, but we're taking a look at consistency in regulations for visitor use across site types, but within FWP ownership, but also looking at the Forest Service and neighboring entities. So we can be more consistent in regulations for users, so they can be better users. So they're not having to guess, well, on this type of property, I can do this, and on this type of property, I can do that. And so we're going to be doing that, looking toward the 22 use season of how can we make our rules more consistent for recreationists across the board? And I think that Fish Creek is a good example of where that could come into play and help. Because DNRC's recreational use rules are much different for camping and even across their different site types. And so we've been talking with them about getting some consistency there too. So it's a bit of combination of looking at what are the regulations for it? And then also how can we better guide the amenities and, and actual use of physical properties, so.
If we, if we had one outcome of this, that would really help our, our staff on the ground and making sure that we're doing a really nice job for the public is for us, I mean, I think it's great that you guys, over the many years of, of working with us and talking with us about Fish Creek are recognizing that there's a difference for us between the state park and the wildlife management area and the DNRC. But I don't think it's fair to ask our public to understand that difference, nor is it probably worth our time to try to educate them. They don't, they don't care and they don't need to. So I, I think as, as an outcome here, that a new user or somebody who's been going to Fish Creek for a long time, they're going to the watershed and see just kind of a similar approach. They'd kind of understand, so what's possible? Where can I camp? Where do you want me to camp? But they're not worried about, well, you could camp here, but not here, but only this kind of use here. I mean, we'd like to see just kind of a, across a, a homogeneous or an even hand as to here's, here's the designated campsites. Have fun. Here's how long you can be here. Thanks for visiting. We've talked a little bit under the signage idea that when you enter into Fish Creek, that a new user might see, like have a portal sign. So you kind of know as you're going into the Fish Creek watershed, it talks a little bit about the history of Fish Creek and, and what it's, what it's been for so many years. And that with the opportunity for them, if they're going up there to camp, here's the places that you can go to camp, here are the opportunities, here's what you can do for fishing. And if you're going to do any of these other recreational activities, here's where you can do it. But it'll be kind of a common approach to them so that we're not trying to, the map won't be a bunch of different colors. It'll just be, welcome to Fish Creek. Aim for that. We'll see, hopefully we can get somewhere like that. And I do think, hearing from my staff, one of our challenges too is making sure that we've, we've got it set up in a way that it, to the best that we can, that it helps manage itself, that it's intuitive for the users when you've got a designated camp spot and whether it's open or not, so that it kind of manages itself really well. But also prepare us for having the site presence that we need. So if we, that we can have somebody helping manage Fish Creek. And, and the alignment of our maintenance staff, as Hope described. So we, that when we have a maintenance team managing Fish Creek, it doesn't matter if they're at the fishing access sites, the state parks, or the wildlife management area, they'll be going to Fish Creek to do maintenance and management. And similar for our staff, when we have staff going to Fish Creek, it doesn't matter whose, whose land they're on, we're going to have a site presence there or try to have a seasonal site presence there. So that's, it's gearing us up really well, that we're aligning resources and trying to get this planning effort. It's, it's all coming together at a really nice time.
Do you guys go play up Fish Creek?
Not anymore.
Not as much.
I haven't been up there for quite a while.
Did we run you off?
Liz was always down at the bottom checking game, and I never had any tech, no.
I used to go up there, you know, that's what I like, sometimes having a destination. When the hole in the wall was there and was open, it was kind of more fun to kind of goof off along the way or see some new sights or huckleberry pick or fish, and then go to the lodge and have something to eat and then come back. And so, you know, I guess now maybe destination, if people knew, I don't know how many people know that you can go up there and come out on 12 and there's low hot springs or the lumberjack and come back petty quick. Sometimes I do that now for when somebody from out of state wants to come see. Sometimes you'll see a moose along the creek or whatever. But I always hate going up somewhere, turning around, coming right back where I drove. You know, like even when you could go up Rock Creek and go over the mountain and come down at the hole in the wall. The old lookout used to be, what was that tower?
White Mountain?
No, the one.
Williams Peak?
Yeah, yeah, Williams Peak. Because there's a kind of a myriad of roads that connect and loop and, you know. So, and then on that note, maybe when Hope's trying to balance out, of course, balance is the key word. People like it quiet and pristine, and they want to hike or raft versus, there are, there are so many roads up there that the logging companies built that do loop and connect, and they're, it's such steep terrain that's sort of to me like a self-governing anti-outlaw riding because it's too steep. But if we had roads, it kind of would, would loop around from a campground and over Williams Peak and back to the campground, then we could maybe encourage multiple use. You know, currently our, our mineral county has so much of the quiet enjoyment of the wilderness. We don't really have anything to balance the people who, like Brian Schweitzer said, like thick steaks and top shelf whiskey and have thick wallets that like the snowmobile, four wheeler, ATV. You know, we could use some of those folks just for the fact that they are the ones that stay in motels. And they are, are the ones that bring their thick wallets and they, they go out to the casinos and the restaurants. And they're not just here for the day rafting and gone. Or out for a day hike with their dog and gone. They tend to bring their kids and their wife, and they got a Polaris and they go huckleberry pick, and then they go have a hamburger, and they come back around and they look at the bears or whatever. I mean, obviously, we don't want to infringe on the WMA with that, but I'm just saying that that's something that we're kind of trying to, we have the Hiawatha Bike Trail on the west end, which starts in Montana, but it's all just bicycle only, and we have all the companies that are catering up there on the Idaho side. They're asking us to grade the road for them, which the majority of the biking is done on the Idaho side. We'd like to see something that maybe had more for everybody instead of just hike 15 miles into Missoula Lake and fish and come back out and go home, you know. If that fits anywhere when you guys are exploring things, I wouldn't mind seeing. And again, something that loops or has a destination that makes it interesting so that nobody wants to go up a road and come back and then meet the other guy who's doing the same thing you are. It's kind of a, we're going to go this way, we're going to go that way, we'll meet you over here and stop and fish on the way, or whatever they're going to do.
I'm taking notes.
Oh, okay.
All ideas welcome.
So I don't know that we've defined very clearly exactly what this planning effort will look like yet. We, we've got a, an aim to accomplish, you know, I think we've been talking August. That gives us a good, whatever we capture in this planning effort that prepares us for the next legislative session, we want to make sure that we've got it wrapped up soon enough that if we need resources or as we need resources, we can actually ask for them and point to why we need them instead of just saying, we need some money, we're pretty sure we're going to need it one of these days. So we want to be pretty clear about what we're asking for. But in that timeframe, in that planning effort, are there, are there folks that, that you think would really benefit making sure we connect to on this process? Are there groups or, or ways that we can connect? And then maybe how would you want to make sure that we're looping back with you guys? How do you, how do you see that working?
Well, I would like to see that have some stake in the maintenance of that road, whether it's, you know, the Forest Service grades it up and then Fish and Game Chloride, you know, puts some chloride on it or whatever to keep. Because I mean, there's so much of that dust that's settling in that creek and, you know, it's for fish habitat.
You've been going to a lot of meetings lately. You're starting to talk like, I don't remember.
Actually, the, it's, it's in the mineral right now. The Forest Service is, is doing a big project on the Fish Creek Road for drainage and putting gravel on it. And I don't know, I just think, you know, the Fish and Game would maybe pay to have a chloride and just to keep some of that sediment out of the creek.
Yeah, we were talking on the way over and I, and Hope's been helpful. She's aware that the road and maintenance of the road has been a topic for us for quite some time. And we are constrained by our funding sources. Our funding source is allowing us to pay for maintenance of roads. We were working, trying to work to see if we could use the gravel pit. I mean, that was a, on our part, trying to be creative about, well, maybe we can contribute gravel to us, to this project. And then we ran into the issue with Antonada on our gravel pit. We didn't know that we wanted to be the Johnny Appleseed of Antonada for the entire drainage and anywhere else that that gravel goes. But that's not to mean that we're done trying to be creative. I think there might be other ways that we could look at some of these things. I didn't think about the application of, and dust abatement potentially. I'm just exploring.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a, you know, once, or actually twice a year, the Forest Service blades it and gets it in shape, usually in the spring and then just fall and, you know, coordinate with the Forest Service. And once, when they do it in the spring, then, I mean, they do that for the Hiawatha.
For the Joe?
For the Little Joe. I know they did a bunch on Cedar Creek this year in the areas that are along the creek. Anyway, it's just a, a way I think that the Fish and Game could step up and help. I mean, because it is, I mean, there is a lot of sediment that comes off that road that goes into that creek. I mean, there's times that it's just like a fog on going to Fish Creek because of this, all the sediment and the dust.
As far as groups that could help them with ideas or planning?
Well, I mean, that would be something you could get, even with Crowder Unlimited might even partner with Fish and Game, you know, on the, keeping the sediment out of the creek, so.
Well, what, like what's, what's the plan for the, remind me, do you guys own the ground or is it part of the park where the rafters use a lot along, you know, from the, any of those rafting put-ins or takeouts, or is that a kind of a separate issue? It's not dovetailed into this at all, what we're talking about?
It's a good question, Roman. We, we had that exact question pop up from, for internally. We were talking about, so what is the scope of this planning effort? Because the, the potential for there to be camping that supports the Alberton Gorge and that other, our other ownership along the Clark Fork River, there, there's a connection there. I, I think we have to be careful that we don't try to do the, a planning effort for all of Alberton and all of those lands along with Fish Creek, but we're still trying to right-size that and figure out how it's connected.
Oh, when you said other groups for recreational ideas, you know, Mike Johnson at River Guide, does he want to do kayak rescue on Fish Creek or classes or swimming or, or lessons? Or I, I'm trying to think of answering your question, who else would be good groups for them to confer with on ideas for recreation at the park of Fish Creek? Who, who has a big stake? Mr. Yarnell, your family lives up there. Do you have any ideas? What, what you'd like to see happen or not see happen up there?
You know, I like looking at the, trying to use some of those old blocking roads as, as or ATVs and such. There's a lot of, a lot of call for that, I think. You know, I think, but I know the last time we went camping up there, there's people going around, 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 around in the same loop because there's no place that they could go other than up and down Fish Creek Road. People don't want their kids on riding these ATVs on the main road. So, um, there's a, there's, I, I, need might be a strong word, but there's an interest in that. I'm, I'm just here to see what, kind of keep my track of what is happening up there because, you know, you guys border two sides of my property.
Can I ask what your name is?
Dennis Yarnell.
Dennis Yarnell. Where are you at?
We live on the Sierra Ranch.
Oh.
My mother was a seer.
Oh, no kidding?
Down the Hay Creek Road there.
Nice to meet you.
My property is from the Hay Creek Road up to the ridge, in that corner, that section.
So you go up and play some?
We do. Our whole family goes up there at least every mortal day and Labor Day, usually at Clearwater Crossing, usually in the same camp, same campsite. For 100 years, people know that that's where the seers go.
So you don't have to put up a sign, stick in the plane? They just know?
Pretty much.
So what if we, so is that public ground where you're camping?
Yes.
So what if?
It's been Forest Service site for years. I don't know if it's part of the park now or whether it's.
Oh, I doubt it.
But it's, it's a, it's a trailhead and campsite there for, has been for years.
You're talking about Clearwater Crossing?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's like the main trailhead for all the green burn.
Well, I got a what if for you, because this is where my mind's at, and I wonder what you would say. So if the Forest Service came in there and spruced it all up, made some improvements, polished it, shined it, had signs, stalls, stuff, does that make you happier to have arrived there or unhappy to arrive there?
Well, I'm not sure what you.
Well, so if.
Picnic tables, vaulted toilets.
There's a picnic table there already. There's a firing there already. I mean, that's all still, that's all there.
So you, and you appreciate having?
Pretty much like it, yeah.
Okay.
There's a new bridge too, across the creek, which is pretty nice.
So maintaining it and keeping it up and improving it is something you appreciate?
Yes.
Okay. Because I've wondered if there are people who, who if we develop something, shined it all up, made it nice, you know, that they would, oh my God, what have you done? And would drive off somewhere else to try to find someplace where they feel like they're hiding a little bit more, you know?
Yeah. I mean, there's a balance before the rustic feel and, and some amenities. You know, I don't think people want to have it look like the KOA, but they do need to have a firing and a picnic table. And a toilet, that's really pretty much all most people probably need.
No need for gazebos and cement pad and?
I think that's where we're going. I think that's where we're going.
Laurie probably wants.
There you go, man.
Well, I was down there on the Fourth of July, Lad made me go on the Fourth of July to see what was going on. And, of course, I know nothing about nothing, I'm a wildlife guy. But, but what I saw was, it was not overrun with people. But people wanted to camp at Forks, and Forks was full. You know, to the extent that you could tell, Forks was full. And then, so then they would pioneer and squeeze in and whatever, where they could further up the little road there. And then, so they'd be in unimproved sites as close to it as they could get. There's a handful of spots there where you can find a place to camp as close as you could get there. And then there was kids on ATVs, not very many of them, a couple of them, that their whole purpose of being there, you know, is to run their ATV, which is fine, they were courteous, but they stirred things up a little bit. They would buzz up and down the road and back through the camps and so forth. And I don't know if anybody was bothered, but what the point is, is that I just thought there wasn't enough room for what people wanted to do there at that particular time.
Definitely true on your heavy use day, on your heavy use weekends.
Is it like that otherwise?
No, I wouldn't say every weekend, no. But on holiday weekends, when everybody wants to go out, I'd step from Tristana to place where everybody, you know, people have to go up three or three days ahead of time if they want to say, that sort of thing.
But then not everybody goes up there to camp and fish either, you know? They just like to just, so maybe up there where the park is supposed to be, you know, maybe just put some, someplace where they can just go up and camp and ride their four-wheelers around and not be on the main thoroughfare of the road.
Right. People, the people that want to ride their four-wheelers don't necessarily need or want to be on the creek.
Yeah.
But they do want a place where they can ride their four-wheelers. They want to do it out of, outside of the campground, but if they don't have any place to go, but around the campground loop.
Where their kids are safe. You're kind of out of the way and you've got Rock Creek and, you know, some of those other towards Rivulette or whatever you've got.
There's, yeah, there's lots of.
Other areas that are not right on the main Fish Creek Road and you're kind of off, out of the way.
I spent my fifty, sixty years fighting, fighting with my gun in the car on all those roads. There's lots of roads that could be used for four-wheeler ATV access that are already there. And like Roman said, they make, they connect and make loops and you can go around it. I prefer to see that open for hunting as well, or not, or hunting, I don't, I don't want to stop using those roads. I can't have a road on.
Well, just for you.
I do have a disabled sticker on my car.
Well, there you go, there you go.
I was just asking about the rafting because I think that in the future, the boat launch is getting used more and more and more. And I think some of those people are looking for places to, to camp while they're there, you know, the ones that come in from out of state. So maybe like Laurie said, to that original campsite you guys were thinking of for the state park, level flat, close enough to, because I think sometimes that big pine one just gets so full and people do have to start finding their own little spots that may not be the best to be camping. Drive their truck right down next to the creek or make ruts or whatever. But if there was a rafting tie-in with, so they could stay there and then go down and do all their business with Western Waters or Montana River Guide, it's kind of a close connection for, for their business that they want to do. Because we don't have a lot of places for them to stay, close by.
Does the, does the Forest Service campground on, along the interstate serve that role at all for them?
The one at the rest area?
Yeah.
I don't know what kind of, I don't think a lot of the, the Good Sam Club people see that on their GPS and they destinate, you know, they take off the exit and they go and park there. I don't know if too many.
Like rafters or?
Yeah, rafting people do. I think they want a little bit more, they're rafting and they're more looking for the quieter nature. They don't like to be by, annoying the interstate.
We ever looked into the floating on Fish Creek? I don't know that we've, yeah, but have we?
Haven't looked into it, how?
Well, there, there is more floating on Fish Creek.
There is more floating. Yeah, like intertubed kind of stuff.
Is it intertubed kind of stuff?
I think so, yeah. I don't really think you can do a canoe or anything like that, unless you do it in high water.
That's mild just before you get to the river, pretty, pretty expert rafting.
I floated with my boys before when they were little, but it was low water and we got intertubes. And I wanted to make sure I got ahead of them so they didn't continue under the river. At the mouth of Fish Creek and lose them in the big, big flood.
Pick them up in town.
Blue cans right there.
Did you have to do a head count at the end of the trip?
Well, I have twins, so funny you should say that. Which one are you? Only got one of them, just like the other one, so we're okay. No, I can't think of any earth-shattering ideas to present for, you know, groups to get with or ideas.
Yeah, the ATV groups.
I don't know if, you know, the, what is it, Ohio State or whatever that owns Homewall now, if they would have any, you know, input of ideas of what they'd like to see.
Yeah, I know, I think they're coordinating with Liz occasionally on some students helping out on stuff.
Yeah, and actually they're helping do some of our monitoring for the WIP program, some of the WIP transacts. It's kind of a nice thing we could tie in with them and for one of their classes.
Yeah, that's, they might have some, some input, being a neighbor, but they might also have an interest.
Other areas that they'd like to see implemented or?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Well, don't think about this as a, a one-shot.
No.
This isn't your only opportunity, so.
Right.
So if you guys have other ideas or you, you think about some folks, or as the, as we work through our planning process, if you start to hear that maybe we've missed some folks, or just let us know, we'll just, we don't want to miss anybody here.
I don't know what kind of marketing or research you can do and what kind of interest there would be for people that have larger motor coaches or, or EVs that would have a more developed campsite for those kind of people closer to the highway or more on the lower ends. I don't know, have more input from that or not.
Yeah, we're seeing a general trend, and I'm sure you guys are seeing this as well, of that outdoor camping experience, the number of RVs out there has just gone really, really high. I mean, a lot of folks are buying RVs and using them more often than ever before. Car camping for so many years was the thing and people still car camp, but there's a whole lot more RV use. And as you just described, the OHV use and people interested in buying OHVs. We really saw an uptick the last couple of years in non-resident use of Fish Creek from Washington, Oregon and Idaho. And I can't blame them when the campgrounds are full and the Forest Service campgrounds are full and you just drive a little bit further and you can go to this other spot. And on, probably not the, probably not the image that we want to be portraying to anybody who's just coming to camp, but it appears that there isn't a lot of rules. There appear that you can camp where you want. And, and that's, that's something that we're aiming to correct a bit. We wanted to look a little more managed than that. And particularly with these groups that are willing to drive and spend a week, they can have a pretty significant impact and, and that impact is reduced if they're camping where we'd like them to camp. So we're not telling them, stay home, but let's get them right where we want them to be, so.
And, and you mentioned earlier, Randy and Hope about the funding and stuff and so. And I know it's a free country, you can't make people not go from state to state or whatever, but currently, you know, you kind of have a little bit of funding source from the residents of Montana, whether it be on the state park fee or hunting licenses or whatever. But a lot of the out-of-staters come here and they don't pay anything. And that's kind of what we, we see at the county level is that a lot of the people that do the rafting, for example, they're all from Coeur d'Alene or Spokane or out of state. And we don't, we don't, they don't even pay taxes for law enforcement, but yet our law enforcement is constantly having to help them with whatever problem arises on their visit here. So is there any thoughts or ideas that, while you guys are kind of reorganizing and stuff, are there any plans for any sort of user fees for any of the services you've got going, whether they're in-state or out-of-state to help defray your, you know, your cost deficit, if you will? Toilet paper in the vaulted toilets, parking, you know, all those things. Not that I'm just asking to see if you're going to balance your budget, but it's going to probably be a problem in the future because we are becoming a popular destination. And I would like to see one day, and, you know, the legislature can figure it out, but there are some pay-to-use sites, not at the state level, I understand now, but, you know, the, the parking and the boat launching, you have to pay in certain areas of Montana. I think they must be, you know, federally owned or Charlie Russell Reserve or whatever. But I wonder if we're going to have to get that way eventually when so many people come and use it and don't, you know, leave any money behind for it. Is there any, is it basically a legislative hurdle to get over, Hope? To convince lawmakers that why don't we pay, why don't we charge people five dollars to park at a boat launch or five dollars to load their boat at a boat launch? And, you know, if they are a Montana license plate, that's part of being, paying it on your license plate. You get to load your boat free, but if you're from Idaho or Washington, you have to have a, because you're not paying for it on your license plate.
So we have a bunch of fee structures in place now. So we have a bunch of state park campgrounds and fishing access site campgrounds where whether you're a resident or a non-resident, you have to pay to camp. It's more expensive for the non-resident and then residents get a reduced rate. You get a reduced rate if you've already bought a fishing license at the fishing access site campgrounds. And so we have a fee structure in place across the state. Fish Creek's a little unique because our fishing access site program is designated primitive. We're not charging fees at our fishing access site, but it also doesn't have a lot of amenities. There's not a lot there, it's a flat spot at some designated sites. There's room for us to, to build a fee model at Fish Creek. There's room for us to build campsite fees and we could, and we could ask for that. The, the fishing access site parking thing, that's been brought up legislatively the last several sessions around the, those users who haven't traditionally paid for that. So our fishing access site program is paid through fishing license dollars and a little bit of the license fee that comes off of the, the license plate registration fee. Most of that fee goes to, to Montana State Parks, but a portion goes to fishing access sites. So some of that money's going to the fishing access sites if you register your vehicle as a resident. The last couple of sessions where we've, where we've asked, and Representative Logi was, carried that bill about having other recreational users pay for use of our fishing access sites. And I think what we bumped into is, it, it almost made it through last session. And this is just my words and my, my view of what I saw at the session, but, but I, what I saw was that there seemed to be an interest in it just out of fairness. That, that seemed to, to get a lot of traction with, with the legislators around, it just seems fair that all of those folks were using it would pay in some way. But what Fish Wildlife and Parks wasn't as prepared to do is to say, what are we going to do with that money? Because at the time, we, we have money in the bank or when you look at our accounts, we have money in our accounts. So it's hard to say that we need that money when what we really need is the appropriation to use the money we have. What, what I think we're doing now in preparing for the next legislative session is demonstrating, so where do we need the money? Where do we need our money at our fishing access sites and our state parks to manage the recreation, that huge uptick in recreation that's occurring? And I think we just need to be a little better prepared to talk about, so what are we going to do with the money? And then if we need the funding mechanism, then that's an easy one. We can point to that and say, well, that would generate a lot of money. But we, I think we need to be able to demonstrate that we're having a hard time getting the money in now. Just on fairness, it, it almost made it through the, the last session. And I'm sure Hope has another, has a front row seat to a bunch of that.
I did have a front row seat to those bills. And, you know, some of the particular concerns that were raised, I remember Representative Jedidiah Hinkle in committee was talking about concern about requiring fees for use of a fishing access site, which was the context in which we were talking about this, from folks who aren't angling but using it. And I think when we did the numbers, it was what, forty, fifty, sixty percent of people at fishing access sites weren't anglers? I can't remember.
Depends on which one, yeah, there would be some that would be really high.
Yeah.
When it would use.
And ours would be ninety percent rafters.
Yeah, sear, for instance, sear tarkio, you bet, yeah.
And, and the concern became, at least that he expressed and vociferously, was that instituting fees across all fishing access sites versus those like the Madison River in his area that are such high use and they're trying to deal, mitigate the impacts down there. Whereas you might have fishing access sites out in Region Six in northeast Montana where it doesn't make any sense to have people. And, and so that was one of the concerns that was expressed was the one-size-fits-all might not be the right solution. So, but I, I think there is definitely recognition that users that aren't angling and aren't hunting need to be coming to the table to help protect the resources. But on the other side of that sensitive conversation, you also have hunters and anglers who, some of them express concern about giving others voice at the table of making, you know, providing input to make decisions, whereas we've traditionally had the loudest voice at the table and, and are concerned about sharing that space. So there are a couple of fronts on which that conversation comes.
I think we actually have the ability in, in our current state park fee rule to charge camping fees.
Absolutely, and they use potentially, depending, for non-residents.
Is we don't have the infrastructure out there to do it, the staff to administer it and enforce it. But I think that those are some of the things we're going to be looking at through this planning process is, you know, where, where does that make sense, doesn't make sense, that kind of thing. And again, those would be similar to our others, Randy just described our other fee rules, where Montana residents would see a decrease or discounted amount to pay. So I think it's something we'll be looking at through this process.
Well, I would have to agree that one size doesn't fit all. Nobody, Montanans do like common sense and it makes absolutely no sense to expect them to pay for a put-in in Scobee, Montana, when no one ever goes there. But the Madison Valley or the sear tarkio, everybody is clamoring over each other to get in and out. Sometimes we actually have arguments. You're not moving your butt quick enough. Get your raft on and get the hell out of the way, I'm next. I mean, the, and, and I understand your enforcement problem and all that, but there would probably be places like Madison County, Gallatin County and Mineral County where, you know, if there was a memorandum of understanding, we'd gladly send a deputy by, you know, I was over in Washington and the Cordis area and you had to pay just to park your car. And what you did was you stuck a five-dollar bill in there and you pushed it in and it came out a little ticket with a time and date on it. You set it upon your dash, whether it was a state trooper or a cop or a park ranger, if he went by there and saw that you didn't have that on there, it was for that day, he'd scratch you out a ticket and put it on your windshield. And so we would be willing to do that because, not to be focused on us and our problems, but we, we have a lot of, I've told Andy this in the past, but our road is just being pummeled to death by the people that come over here by the boatloads and the school buses and the Greyhound buses that drop them, right? I mean, there's, I don't know, we haven't had a count on that old highway for a while, but it's just astronomical from, from the wintertime when the ranchers and the residents drive it to summertime. And, and again, the anglers, there, nobody wants to angle there because there's so many people in the way. You're going to catch somebody's bathing suit, you know, you can't fish. So I really think there's a way that we need to get the people that want to. So I really think there's a way that we need to get the people that want to just raft, purely raft, to pay, because they're not paying through their licensing fees, they don't buy a license. Anyway, I'm kind of agreeing, we don't need to do it all across the state, but when we have high intensity concentrated fees, and those people that are coming here wouldn't even blink an eye to pay, they would go, oh, that's normal. Yeah, so enough on that soapbox, because Randy's heard it a gazillion times, but I was going to just say before we get on to the next subject, I forget to ask, because we always ask this when everybody leaves, titles and hierarchy, or if you will, because we got all you fishing game people here, and because Randy, you're currently, what are you, what's your title?
I'm the regional supervisor.
And so that means you supervise all state parks?
Uh, yep, the fisheries and the wildlife and the parks and all the stuff.
Oh, the whole kit and caboodle.
For the region, yep.
Oh, okay.
And then Hope is the Park and Outdoor Recreation Division Administrator, and so Fish Wildlife and Parks is maintaining kind of a centralized, decentralized structure. So there, there are still seven regions, and I'm the, I'm the supervisor of the region, and then Hope is the supervisor for all of the Park and Outdoor Recreation Division for the state. And so she has counterparts, there's a Fisheries Division Chief, there's a Wildlife Division Chief, there's an Enforcement Division Chief, and all, similarly, they have their programs that they administer for the whole state. And then I'm responsible for those people and the supervision of the staff and making sure we actually get these things done on the ground here for the regional level. So Hope and I work really well together, and she's responsible for this statewide, and she's here today representing and helping us manage our piece of it for Region Two.
Wow, big undertaking, big state.
I'm learning a lot.
And I didn't catch your name, sir.
Lauren Flynn, I'm the Regional Parks and Outdoor Recreation Manager for...
So a number of years ago, you might remember working with Chet Crowser?
Yeah, because I sometimes would interchange your name, I think I called you Randy Crowser or Chet Arnold.
And so, so Chet was the, the, Chet was the Parks Division Supervisor for Region Two, and with this reorganization, and, and Lauren took over Chet's spot when Chet left. So Lauren's been the Parks Manager for the region now for a couple of years, and, and with this new reorganization, Lauren will be responsible for the Park and Outdoor Recreation Division for Region Two.
Oh, okay, nice to meet you, thanks.
Yeah, so Lauren's sort of the regional lead for the stuff that I manage.
Right.
Yeah, but he still reports to Randy directly.
So we complain to him and he gonna phone and tell you or...
Or Randy somehow, depending on what the issue is, we sort through.
I'm not going to answer your question, I'm not going to answer your question, I'm going to...
I got to get back to you.
Yeah, right.
Let me go back and talk to the manager.
That's right, that's right, there is no manager, but I'm going to just tell you, I need to go talk to him.
And honestly, with, I know we're joking, but I really do appreciate that I get the cell phone call, and I, I like, I like the call, I like to be able to figure out how to help, and I know Laurie's called me, and it's, and it's usually like, when it finally rises to the level that Laurie calls me, it's like, it's like, okay, how do I, how do I help? What did we do, what haven't we done, how can we help?
Well, you used to game, you used to be a game warden, you know what it's like everywhere, so...
I know that big piece of it well, but boy, the rest of it I'm learning still.
And then Liz, you've changed hat a few times, what are you...
I know, because you remember me in the Wolf days. So I'm now the area Wildlife Biologist, so within Region Two, we have four Wildlife Biologists, so my area is Missoula Valley West, all of Mineral County, basically. So I have part of Missoula County, but all of, all of Mineral County, and so mostly do big game, but also have responsibility on the WMA, Fish Creek WMA for Habitat Management there, so, so we have the crossover of Habitat Management and trying to, obviously, our primary purpose of owning that is, is for wildlife, and right now it's hunting season, and there's certainly a lot of people, as you know, that partake up there. So I, I certainly, especially up there, from a wildlife perspective, I've been trying to grow elk up there, and that's always been a, you know, a big thing that we've heard about from the public, how to, that's all winter range that we own in there for, for big game, and so how to, how to protect that and keep that, you know, really good habitat for wildlife, and yet balance the needs of the public and this recreation use, and so that's what we're kind of striving to do. A lot of the recreation use happens in the summer, which is good, because it's really the wintertime is that critical time for big games, so if we can kind of protect that, that winter range and, and make sure that it's secure, especially on a hard winter, everything gets pushed down even lower, then I think we have that ability to, to offer some other, you know, opportunities for people to enjoy it too, so those are things we have to kind of sort out, we're obviously doing the big weed management project out there as part of that habitat improvement. Five-year project, like a million dollars we're putting at weeds up there. That project, so that's one of our big pushes right now, is to get that under control. But otherwise, yeah, I'm working on the season setting right now for hunting seasons for next year, for the next two years, you've heard a little bit about that, Laurie. So I do all of that, as well as run the check station at Fish Creek, and Dwayne's seen me out there, Dwayne hasn't seen me out there, because he avoids that area, as I found out.
That's right.
Those are all, yeah.
He's driving around you in the dark.
Laurie's such a chicken, she sends her comments in under her husband's name.
No, he did his own.
I saw that and I thought, oh, boy, what a chicken.
Wait, so you really read all those, huh? Well, what's your title these days?
If it's my daughters or something, then it would have been...
I'm the Wildlife Manager, I work for him.
You've been on forty-one years and, and the young guy is bossing you around, huh?
And I work for him, I'm at the bottom.
Don't pick the scabs, Laurie.
Okay. Well, and then Mary there, she films, these are on YouTube, and so besides us getting word out to the people, a lot of people watch these, interestingly enough, and so maybe they'll come up, come forward with some ideas about who to collaborate with or, or suggestions and what have you. But I'm glad that you guys are going to re-initiate the momentum for that, because that'd be great.
And I think I'd just like to leave you with the thought of, the director, Director Warsack has said, in different venues, we have the same mission, but a different approach. And, you know, we're, we're motivated to move and get something done so that you're not continuing to see, have concerns about what's happening, what's happening, where are we going?
Good, and they got Fire Hope Stockwell at the helm. No, I remember you in the legislature, I'm not just saying that. So, I'm good.
Well, thank you so much for carving out some time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Not going to dump any grizzlies over here, are you?
Look, they already am. Why do you think we came this way today?
That's right, we're going to trail them behind us.
We don't want any.
Well, thank you, guys, very much for making the trip out.